You're live.
All right, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, May the 4th. It is just after seven o'clock. Mr. Ellis, would you lead us in an opening prayer?
I would be glad to.
Please.
Most merciful God. We come before you at a time like this, at a time when we have so much doubt on our minds as to what tomorrow's going to bring. Lord, we ask that you bless all the workers of our city and give them strength and guidance. Bless this council and guide us in the way that you would have us to go. Look upon us with favor, Lord, and keep us, keep us in perfect peace. Keep the city of Jeffersonville in health and peace. And keep all of your servants seeking to serve you better and more in every way. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to have a roll call.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Byrne.
Present.
Councilperson Parrish. Councilperson, Council Vice President Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Croft.
Here.
Councilperson Webb.
Here.
Council President Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Does the record reflect that eight councillor present?
I know you guys can't see them on the video, but Councilman Webb and Councilman Croft are here properly social distanced in the room with me, and we're all on a conference call. All right, minutes to be approved, we have minutes from the regular proceedings of April the 20th, 2020. Takes a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burns, second by Mr. Webb. We'll have to do a roll call vote.
Councilperson White. Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Burns, to approve the agenda. Ms. Gill.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Okay, claims to be approved, we have claims for the civil city in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six, I'm sorry, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Eight four, I'm sorry, four eight six, eight six nine point nine four. Heather, was there anything additional?
No, everything's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, and second by Mr. Hawkins. Let's go.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
That's unanimous of those present now, present, now we have Park's claims in the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Heather, was there anything?
No, no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, unanimous of those present. I'm getting report that Mr. Parrish is trying to join us, but is having some technical difficulty. We'll try to get him, him in. Report of the clerk?
Not at this time.
Okay. We don't have any unfinished business on the agenda. New business, Heather Metcalf, within ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
Yeah, there's two transfers on the ordinance for tonight. One of, the first one is for two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty cents for coming from the Nahand Fieldhouse Rehab Fund Improvement Account and transferring to the Building Materials Account. And then the last one is for a thousand dollars from the General Fund in the mayor's budget, moving it from Contractual Services to other supplies.
There's Joe. Joe, can you hear us, man? He's connecting still. You're muted, Joe.
Oh.
There we go. Sorry, guys.
All right. Well, that's all right, the record will reflect that Parrish joined us as we got into new business. Joe, we're looking at ordinance number 2020 OR 23, I believe it is, which is the ordinance additional, I'm sorry, it's a transfer ordinance within the same department. We have a two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty cents coming out of the Nahand Fieldhouse Improvement Fund into the Building Materials. And then we have money out of the Contractual Services line in the mayor's budget going to other supplies. Is there any questions, comments, or a motion?
There's no questions, so make a motion to approve 2020 OR 23, first and second.
Second.
Was there a desire to have this passed on all three, Heather, or was first and second going to be okay?
First and second is fine.
Okay. So I had a motion, Mr. Maples, and a second, Mr. Hawkins, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. There you go.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Parrish.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you all.
All right. I don't have anything else on the agenda at this time, so we'll go to attorney comments. Mr. Wilder? Mr. Wilder, you were muted.
I have none for asking.
Gotcha. Mr. Merkley?
Oh, I have nothing right now, nothing.
Are there any department heads that are on? Ms. Metcalf, do you have anything to add?
No, we're all good here.
Okay. Council comments, Mr. White?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right. In light of today being May 4th, I just want to show my Star Wars virtual half marathon medal with Chewbacca on it and want to thank all the city workers for the hard work that they've been doing over this, during this pandemic, and may the force be with you.
Anything else, Mr. White?
I emailed everyone a statement, including the clerk. Larry, I did not send it to you, I apologize, but I want to read a statement and then I will finish. It's a statement regarding Catalyst Rescue Mission. This council approved fifty thousand dollars to Catalyst Rescue Mission, Inc. To care for those, for whatever reason, find themselves temporarily homeless. The approval of those taxpayer dollars to care for those in need demonstrate the city's commitment to care for those that have fallen on hard times. Today, I am deeply troubled by some of my observations at Catalyst Rescue Mission, Inc. During the first weeks of April, a press conference was given by Catalyst Director Paul Stinsrud and Catalyst President Jim Moon announcing an award of a state of Indiana grant that would make Jeffersonville ground zero for fighting the coronavirus for southern Indiana's homeless, including transporting symptomatic patients from twelve Indiana counties to Clay'sburg. Although said announcement has been proven to be premature, it was highly disturbing, it was a highly disturbing revelation. Deservedly, residents in the area were upset. Firstly, no one was included or informed from the neighborhood or the city of Jeffersonville in the grant's preparation. Secondly, to transport coronavirus symptomatic patients from twelve counties to an area where the population is disproportionately vulnerable to the virus and death is outrageous. As a result, area residents staged a protest at Catalyst Rescue Mission. It was during this protest Director Paul Stinsrud went live on Facebook. Throughout this video, one could hear Director Paul Stinsrud repeatedly making the meeting remarks regarding Jeffersonville's taxpaying citizen. Those remarks are unbecoming of someone holding the title of director and slapping the face to the protesters whose tax dollars were given to Catalyst earlier this year. Later that night, Director Stinsrud made a Facebook post, quote, "Have you ever had one of those days when you're holding a stick and everybody looks like a pinata?" When asked if he was referring to the people of Clay'sburg, he responded that only I, meaning me, could take something like this out of context. When I asked him to put it in context, he was non-responsive. The citizens of Jeffersonville deserve better, and that is why I'm demanding Paul Stinsrud be terminated as Director of Catalyst Rescue Mission, Inc. I have given Catalyst sufficient time to do the right thing, and as of today, I have not been informed of termination. This is why I'm asking my fellow councilmen to not give consideration to any future funding request from Catalyst unless Paul Stinsrud is terminated within five days. As far as I'm concerned, he is not welcome to the city of Jeffersonville until he learns to respect its citizens. The next matter of concern to me and my constituents are the tents in the parking lot next to Catalyst. Let me first say this, no one in Jeffersonville should be sleeping in a tent unless they are camping for recreation. The city of Jeffersonville has sent notice to Catalyst that its tents need to be removed. Likewise, I am demanding Catalyst Rescue Mission take down the tents it has erected in its parking lot. If it does not, I'm requesting the administration to enforce our zoning laws to ensure that tents come down as quickly as possible. If Catalyst experiences a need to quarantine an existing resident or walk-in, it now has a memorandum of understanding with the red carpet in place folks until they need more serious treatment or are deemed free of the coronavirus. There are very few, if many, people in the two remaining tents, so this will not be a large task. Alternatively, Park Memorial Church on Park Place has a gym behind it with an industrial kitchen. Should there be a need after the tents come down, I suggest Park Memorial Church provide space in its gym, which has two levels, for those who cannot find space at Catalyst. With Jim Moon as the pastor of Park Memorial Church, I am sure he will be able to arrange it. Lastly, I have received reports of increased traffic by transients in Clay'sburg due to Catalyst. In response, I made my own observations. Just yesterday, I observed nine people walk to Catalyst, retrieve something, and leave. I was able to determine two people went to wooded homeless camp next to the railroad tracks. One traded his box for money in front of Spring Hill School, another gave her box away, and three went to the Housing Authority on National Avenue. What is Catalyst giving away to people who do not reside there? Is Catalyst using the funds received from the city of Jeffersonville to provide those things? Will Catalyst limit its fit traffic to those seeking shelter due to falling on hard times? Will Catalyst, is Catalyst giving out small tents for people to use in the city like the one JPD removed last week behind Spring Hill School? I would like prompt answers to these questions, preferably in written form, to dy@cityofjeff.net. My comments are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Burns?
Matt, if I, Matt, real quickly, could I speak to the tent issue as to the city and where we're at on that today? Notice was sent to Catalyst from our planning and zoning department advising Catalyst that the tents were in violation of the zoning code. The city's position is and has been that the tents should be removed. They are in violation of our zoning code, and advise them that enforcement and fines would begin in fifteen days unless they are removed, unless they are removed or the county health department directly gave an order that they would remain erected for public health concerns. Obviously, you know, county health officer has that authority. We received that order in the afternoon from Dr. Yezel, where he has ordered that the tents at Catalyst remain for the next fourteen, next fourteen days, and at that time, he would make a decision whether or not they come down or continue with another order. So.
When was that order?
We, we.
Pardon? When was that order received?
Just like thirty minutes before, before the meeting, or less than thirty minutes, five minutes before the meeting. We made a communication with Councilman White, myself, and with, and Mayor Adams through this entire process, and that is one reason why we started the process to have, to begin the process in our zoning code to have them removed. But now we're faced with an order that has been issued by Dr. Yezel that they remain.
Who requested that order?
Who requested the order?
Yes.
Our position was they were going to, they were going to be enforced and fined unless Dr. Yezel ordered that they remain.
Right. So last week, we received two letters requesting permission, then today we.
I was, that was, that, because, yeah, because requesting, requesting permission is, is not saying it's an order.
Right.
So if, if the Health Department believes that they should be up, then they should issue an order that they should be up. They can't have it both ways.
Right, so they requested permission last week, and then today, ten minutes before the meeting, we get an order. Who reached out, did someone from the city reach out to them for that?
Because, because, because they were told they were not going to be granted the permission, therefore they would have to issue an order. We're not going to grant permission for the tents to be there.
So, Les, are you saying that they have issued an order, or that would be their alternative?
No, an issue, an order has been issued by Dr. Yezel, signed by Dr. Yezel.
And that happened ten minutes before the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I can show you the email, Dustin, no, I'm just, yeah. Email came in ten minutes before the meeting from the attorney, Zach Stewart.
Okay. I'd like to see any communication from the administration to the Health Department regarding that.
What's that?
I would like to see any communication from the administration to the Health Department in the last.
I just, I just, I just told you, I mean, there's not a vast conspiracy here, Dustin, I said that we were going to, we told Dr. Yezel and the Health Department, through their attorney, Zach Stewart, that we were going to commence enforcement of our zoning code within fifteen days, after fifteen days, if they were still up unless they produced an order from the Health Department, saying that it was a public health concern that those tents remain up.
I understand.
Okay, I mean.
Okay. Mr. White, do you have anything else?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Burns?
I really don't have anything other than to mention, it looks like we are going to start opening things back up and remind people to continue social distancing. If we all work together, we'll continue with the path that the governor has set forth of getting back to opening up on July 4th. If we don't listen, I have no doubt that he will pull back on his plan and will be back to you first, so please practice social distance.
Okay, Mr. Parrish?
No comment.
Mr. Maples?
Thanks, our city workers are still coming to work and helping the city out.
Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Croft?
I don't have any.
All right, Mr. Hawkins?
I, I do just have a quick question for Dustin about one of the, a part of his letter. Dustin, are you still listening?
Yes.
Towards the end, I'm just wanting to understand what transpired here on your observations. There was boxes given, and then you're, then later you're wondering if those boxes contain tents? Were these boxes large enough to have a tent, or was that just, or is that two separate issues you're kind of bringing alive?
Two separate issues.
Okay, okay. Well, then, thank you, and then beyond that, I don't have anything.
And then the reason, just by that, the reason that's two, that I brought that up is that when the tent was removed, the person said he had just been kicked out of Catalyst. So I was trying to figure out if there's a relation there, I don't know.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, Dustin and I applaud you for taking that position on, on Catalyst. I have been past Catalyst Rescue a couple of times this week, and I saw a number of people setting out around the tents, and there was no social distancing whatsoever there. I also am familiar with all of the, well, I won't say all of them, with many of the camps that people are staying in, and I know that people leave Catalyst, go over to the community kitchen to get lunches, they sit around in groups and everything with no social distances there also, and then come back to Catalyst. And one of the things that I talked with Dr. Yezel earlier this week, and he said that the tents would be removed. But when I talked to him, I also asked him when they were keeping people in tents, if you couldn't keep bedbugs out of Catalyst, how are you going to keep a virus out? I fully support Dustin, one of the things that I would like for the administration, maybe even you, Matt, is that when there's something concerning Catalyst, since you, Scott, and myself, or council at large, we, all three of us also represent the Clay'sburg area, and we need to take an interest in seeing that something is done about that situation out there. I would also like to know who is giving updates on the amount of virus deaths and people that have got the virus in Jeffersonville. Nobody that I know of gives a weekly, a daily, or even monthly update on what's going on within our city and within the neighborhoods of our city. So is it possible that somebody could start giving weekly updates or something about the number of people that's caught the virus, the number of people in the hospital, the number of people that's dying because of the virus, so that we could all know and we would know how to advise the people that call us? I've had a number of calls about the virus, and I can, I cannot tell them anything. As a matter of fact, I, I have referred some people to both Matt and Scott because as being council at large, I think that y'all need to be able to maybe give people some information that I don't have. But once again, thank you very much for the position you've taken, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Just to, to speak to your question about Jeffersonville specifically, there is a dashboard that's put up by the state, and I don't have the numbers for Jeffersonville specifically. At Clark County, we've seen three hundred and thirty-four confirmed cases and sixteen deaths of, of Clark County residents. There are a lot of statistics that are available at different times from different sources, so I try to pay attention to what's reported to the state of Indiana and what they put out. On the subject of Catalyst, Pastor Moon did reach out to me just before the meeting today. I, I explained to him that I understood that the tents were supposed to be put up in an, as an immediate response to, as an immediate temporary response to an unknown, unforeseeable problem. And it was my understanding that they were going to have those tents up to shelter homeless folks who had contracted the virus until a more permanent solution could be devised. My understanding that there is a, a deal worked out where some hotel rooms have been made available for any homeless person who does test positive for COVID-19, but that one of the tents was still up at the Catalyst, serving as a screening area for new folks who were coming to the shelter. They would hold in that tent area for a period of time until they could be deemed virus-free and then allowed into the shelter. I certainly understand why the Clay'sburg neighborhood would be concerned about having COVID-19 patients and being kept in their neighborhood. Tent, I was, I was issued that there is no one who has tested positive for COVID-19 in the tent or in the shelter, Catalyst. And then I was also, I also understand that, you know, I wouldn't want these tents put up in the middle of my neighborhood either, regardless of what they, what purpose they're being served. So, you know, if the administration or planning zoning is going to have those tents locked down, that's probably appropriate without proper permitting. But, you know, the, the Health Department and, and all of our responding agencies have to find a way to mitigate all of the unforeseeable issues that come with this pandemic. And if I can facilitate any conversations between parties, I'm happy to try to do that, whether it be through council members or from Catalyst or the Health Department. There are a number of contacts and a number of people working through this puzzle that has so many moving parts. If we can communicate, I think we'll, we'll get through. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, I sent out to the council a proposal for some small business relief here in Jeffersonville. It's a two-page document that a couple of us have worked on over the last few days, and I intended to try to get that document on the agenda tonight with an additional appropriation to help fund some relief for small businesses in Jeffersonville. I understand that. I understand that that came out very late, and there wasn't a lot of time for you to look over those things. And because a couple of council members had some concerns and wanted some more time to look over that, we didn't try to get that on the agenda for this evening. I will, however, ask that you look over those documents and communicate any questions or concerns you might have. I have asked Larry, our attorney, to notice for a special meeting of the city council on Wednesday at five thirty PM, and we'll do that via Zoom, just like we're doing now. And we will consider those documents with the additional appropriation. And I believe also there is a proposal for the fire union contract for our fire department and our firefighters. I think the negotiations committee has a contract that they're comfortable with, and if we can consider that on Wednesday. I know the committee sent that contract to Larry to look over as our attorney, and he's looked over that without any major concerns. And now they're going to send that out to us to look over, and hopefully we can consider that on Wednesday as well. So, special meeting, Wednesday night, five thirty PM, and I will have IT to get that link out to everybody. Unless there's anything else?
Matt?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one. I, I'd like to ask Larry if he can speak to or if he can look into the process of how council or I as a councilman can get free, open, open request, open door request for documents.
Sure. So you, as a city, when the other citizen has an absolute right under the Freedom of Information Act, our Indiana version, to request anything that you want related to government, communications, all of those things. So that's something that you individually and your, in your personal, your professional capacity as a member, request. In addition, council actually has a statute that of you as the council, if a majority chooses, can be what I'll refer to flippantly as a grand jury, where you all can look to and witnesses and for you as a body and ask questions regarding a matter which you deem that is necessary to investigate, finances, and. So, so to answer your question, Mr. White, you have two methods, one is a party and a county, and one is an individual seeking.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. There's nothing else?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples?
Second.
Second by Mr. Webb. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Good evening.
Good night.
Good night.